Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March 21st Planning Commission meeting. Tammy, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero.
Present.
Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, one of the first items is we'll do the approval of the February 21st meeting minutes. And then item number two in the regular agenda is a monthly planning report and also an update for our work plan. And number three, an appeal of home occupation permit, Adam Baker Tool Company on 7470 Case on Circle. And then item number four is a public hearing, profile DR-23-02, update and building addition to Mazda Dealership Showroom, 19405 McLaughlin Boulevard. Okay, so I would entertain a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes. Unless anyone has any corrections or additions?
I have no corrections and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Our second motion.
Okay, the motion was brought up by Andrel Langston and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, meeting minutes are approved. Monthly planning report.
Yes.
Staff, please.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So in your packet this evening is the February 2023 planning report. And if there's any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them while we queue up a few slides about your work program that we put together. So Tammy, if you can load this. Any questions about the actions taken by Planning Department this month, the past month? Okay.
Our monitors are not on. Thank you very much. Does any of the, do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the staff report?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, at our last meeting, I was asked about the Planning Commission work plan and if I had seen the objectives that had been put together by this body. And so I did obtain a copy of that, which is here before you. There's five different objectives that were listed for the 2023 to 2025 period. The first one is undertaking a major rewrite of the zoning regulations to align with recent city policy initiatives and strategic goals. The second is to update the city's comprehensive plan, specifically in light of the new downtown overlay code, zoning district, core, downtown overlay core zoning district. The third is to undertake a code update and other policy work related to the CFECC or Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities initiatives that have been passed by the state legislature and are now required of cities, including Gladstone because of our location and metro and our size. Pursuit of certified local government status and transportation parking management and strategies, which could possibly also happen through the CFECC initiatives. So I looked at each of those to see where we could start looking at these things. And there are some constraints on the amount of time and resources that we can put into the work plan just based on staff time available as well as budgets and things and priorities from council. So we did go through, I think the first one is the Title 17 concept updates. I do think we can start looking at this. I know that the goal is a major rewrite, but I think starting with a few chapters and getting some things squared away first makes sense. So I went through and came up with the concepts that in the short time I've been here have come up as issues. One being public improvements and how and when and what is required, at what stages of development permits. Currently, we can have single-family detached homes or the new middle housing types on individual lots where no improvements are required. This could mean, you know, 10 cottages on a lot without requiring any sidewalk because our code doesn't allow us to do that. So there are some things to consider there in light of new development types that are now permitted outright. The lessening of certain review types will reduce barriers to housing, but there are still certain key amenities that the city needs to ensure are being met. So that's one section that I know we need to look at. The second is regarding your multi-household residential district. Just some concern with the conditional use being required there for certain housing types and whether that meets clear and objective requirements. The state ORS does say that for any needed housing, which, you know, in Gladstone, we do have needed housing, but you have to have clear and objective review standards, which the conditional use permit is not. So that's an area that we probably need to look at to maintain state compliance. Home occupation, we have a hearing this evening. There were some language in there that under review might need some update. So that would be a good one to look at. We can talk about that further, of course, after the public hearing. And then others, I don't know, these are the ones that I have been exposed to. I don't know if there are other code sections that planning commissioners know off the top of their heads that need updating, that I should add to this list that are top priority. Any thoughts?
What about the, the new climate regulations that we're going to be?
Yeah, so that is the next, on the next slide. So that will touch a lot of different pieces of the development code, but we don't know which ones yet. So that's a great question.
We will be moving forward with starting to adapt that.
Yeah, I'll flip to the next slide and if things come up that we need to circle back on, I need to take a note on, I'll just do that. But just the other four items besides the updating the development code, the comprehensive plan update to reflect the downtown core overlay zoning district, definitely we can keep that on the list and that needs to be done because now that is in effect. The city council did adopt that at their last meeting, so we will want to move forward on that. And then the climate friendly and equitable communities, we are going to have a work session with the city council on April 11th. We have representatives from DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, who are the state representatives who are helping, they do the rulemaking. So once the legislature passes a law, then it's up to the DLCD staff to figure out how to apply it. And so they're going to come and give the city council the different options for what needs to happen in the next two years roughly. Our requirement is now, well, we have a requirement by June 30th of 2024 to meet certain parking requirements. And there's a few different options. One is to remove all parking mandates in the city. And the other two are to have parking mandates apply in certain circumstances. So some analysis is needed. There's different things to look at with that. So once the city council hears what the options are and what the steps would be to take those options, we would then look for them to make a policy direction. And then that would be what would bring to the Planning Commission to start on that work program piece. So we don't exactly know what the city council wants the city to do with climate friendly and equitable communities, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So it is coming, but it would not kick off. We can let you know on April 18th what is said on April 11th. It's also, you know, be available to the public if you want to come or attend virtually and hear that conversation. Pursuit of local government status was one that we did decide to put on hold just due to the limited resources and the priority of those other items that really do need to be addressed sooner. But of course, you can keep that on your work program and that can be something we revisit as we have time to do so. And then finally, the transportation and parking management. This did have that asterisk that we may want to think about it in the climate friendly and equitable communities. And I think that's a really good idea because parking is the first step. In fact, I think all of you know that the very first piece of the CFECC work was to remove all mandates within a half mile of high-frequency transit, which is McLaughlin Boulevard. So we would not be able to today require parking of anything that comes into those areas. There is legislation, excuse me, there is litigation happening from several jurisdictions in the state on that as well. So we are tracking that and the DLCD representatives in April will give us an update on what's the current climate, not to, yeah, pun intended, I guess. So those are our plans for what we would potentially bring to you. So as far as like adding some work session elements to these meetings where we don't have so many public hearings and we have time to do that, I think the first thing I would plan to do is come in April with some code update ideas and thoughts and we can workshop that a little bit. Is there anything I should add to this list to start?
Oh, I think that's enough.
Okay, it is a lot. This is a good, hardy list to start with.
Yeah, considering it seems like we have at least one or two hearings almost every meeting.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start with the code rewrite and take it in chunks. And then we'll look at the CFECC standards once we know what the direction is from council. And then we'll add that update to the conference of plan for the downtown.
Okay.
Okay.
Does, do any, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a question. You indicated there was a city council work session.
Yes.
But you used the term "we" and I wonder if that includes us? Is it a joint work session or city council?
It's not scheduled as a joint work session. Yeah, but it is open to the public.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Onto our next item, that would be item number three, appeal of home occupation permit. Staff, may I have your report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission, John Schmerber, Gladstone Police Chief. Here with me tonight is Sergeant Matthew Ockerman to also participate in this, in this hearing. Just a little history and background on this issue. On October 18, 2022, the Planning Commission was presented with an appeal of staff decision that granted a home occupation permit to Adam Baker Tool Company LLC 7470 Case on Circle, a double-axle snap-on tool vehicle that operated out of the residence during that time. It also included an employee that reported at a 42M worked out of the home, which was confirmed during an initial code enforcement contact on February 3rd, 2022. After review of the GMC Chapter 17.78 Home Occupation of Title 17, the Gladstone Municipal Code, along with testimony, the Planning Commission decided to ratify the appeal decision to deny the occupation business license for Adam Baker Tool Company LLC on Case on Circle by a vote of six to zero. On December 28, 2022, the Gladstone Police Department conducted a follow-up inspection on Case on Circle and found that Adam Baker was conducting a business without a business license or home occupation license as required by the Gladstone Municipal Code. Adam Baker was issued a citation for violations of Municipal Code, GMC 5.04.030, license required, along with GMC 17.12.0307 accessory uses allowed on home occupation and GMC 17.78030 home occupation. Now, since that time, Adam Baker has been working with the Gladstone Police Department to come into compliance with Chapter 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code and has submitted another application requesting a business license along with a home occupation license. In your packet, you'll see Appendix A for details on the property review and that's, that would be a time period to speak with Sergeant Ockerman regarding that because he led that. Finishing up, the police department has interpreted the status of Adam Baker Tool Company LLC at 74070 Case on Circle to be in compliance of GMC Chapter 17, currently under appeal by Mr. and Mrs. Orm. The city of Gladstone issued a home occupation permit, business license for the business at the property on January 19, 2023. Mr. and Mrs. Orm filed an appeal to the issuance of the home occupation permit, which was received by the city on February 1st, 2023, within the 15-day appeal period for the decision. Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter 17.92 Appeals identifies the Planning Commission as the appeal authority on appeals from ruling and interpretation of the city administrator or designee, which is myself, regarding a requirement of this title. GMC Chapter 17.92 further states that any party given notice under GMC subsection 17.94.0503 may appeal a decision of the city administrator to the Planning Commission. Therefore, Mr. and Mrs. Orm have standing, have standing to file an appeal and the Planning Commission is designated the appeal authority in this matter. So really, the options on this, looking at this is you can either authorize or find that Adam Baker has met the requirements or that he has not met the requirements. City staff recommend, which is what, exactly what city staff recommends.
Is to?
Is to, you need to choose between the two.
Okay.
Our investigation is complete. We do find that we do interpret as being in compliance, but ultimately, because the appeal was filed, it's your decision. And if you have any questions for Sergeant Ockerman, now would be the time.
I do. In reading the packet, he's indicated that he has a new location for business. So I'm wondering why are we looking at appealing this if he's got a designated place of business?
I think, I think what we're going to find is, I think with Adam Baker, that you can ask him that question as testimony, because I don't know that we have the answers to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. I guess, does Mr. Baker want to come forward?
No, everything is in the email that it's in the packet.
Okay. And you really should be up here so it can be recorded when you're speaking. Would you be willing to answer some questions from the planning commissioners? Okay, you need to come up here and state your name and your address. Please. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baker. I'm presuming that everyone here may have questions that they may want to ask. I know Commissioner Smith does.
I have a comment I want to make.
Please make it. Go ahead and have a seat.
Perfect. My name is Adam Baker.
Yeah, I think his address and everything is in the packet.
Yep.
I just want to comment that I'm a partner in a business and I hold a city business license in my name. I don't think it has any effect on the type of work you do or the type of business you have and I don't think it compromises my judgment. And I wanted that statement for the record.
Okay. Questions? How about the question I just asked?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, in reading and preparing, reading in the packet, you've got a place of business out in Damascus?
Correct.
Okay, so I was just curious why you're wanting to appeal this if you already have a designated place for your business?
I'm not appealing it. Mr. Orm's appealing my request for a home occupation.
Okay.
So he's appealing, the city already granted it to me.
Okay.
So the way it's written is that the Orms are appealing the Planning Commission's approval already.
Okay.
So based on these code violations, which I have submitted, my response to them.
Okay. Questions?
Is the biggest, the biggest, so the way I interpret the information we got, your, what you chose to do was find a different location for the actual work to commit. And so you have your home business license and that's just where everything's registered to, but the work's not being, being completed on, on your premises anymore, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, perfect. Sounds like.
Commissioner Weiss?
Well, I'm just wondering, at this point, the staff made a decision to approve the home occupation. So right now, do we need to be considering any argument against that as part of the appeal? Is that?
That's a good question, staff.
Yes, you would want to hear from the Orms who appealed. Yes.
And we also have two people that have signed up to speak.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have any questions? Okay, how about if we have the Orms come up present? Please. They're not here.
I think he is on Zoom, so hold on just a moment.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much. There he is.
He's muted.
Mr. Orm, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me?
We guess we can.
Oh, hi, this is George Orm. I'm calling in remotely. I'm on a business trip on the East Coast. Thank you for allowing me to be part of the meeting. I really don't have anything to add to the letter I sent on the 27th of January. I would question if, if, if Mr. Baker has an alternate location for his business in Damascus. Why is he needing a home occupation permit at his residence?
That was my question as well.
It's just a matter of how he registered his, his business, so. That, that's just the legal location of his business, but he's not conducting, conducting business there.
Well, then why is the step van and the trailer?
The work. He's not conducting work, sorry.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question again, please?
If that's the case, then why are the step van and the trailer parked at his residence?
Mr. Baker would need to answer that question, please.
Well, and, and I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's relevant that there is a second location that he's been able to work out of while he figures out the application. If he wants to work at his home or he wants to base out of his home and it's within, you know, the compliance of 17.78, then I don't know that it's relevant that there's a second location in Damascus.
Actually, it is, because it's the principal place of business.
Yeah.
As it says right here on the corporate, corporation division, that's out in Damascus is the principal place of his business. And there was no home address on, other than the individuals address down at the bottom. Everything else is another address.
Chair Smith, if I can, Heather Austin, city planner. So I, I think what's happening here is that the location of the business was registered at the home and then now it is registered out of Damascus, but there is, you could almost call this like a satellite office of the business. So he still would like to be able to park his vehicle there, maybe take delivery of some things into the garage, but it's not the primary location, but he still is conducting business related to this home.
Yeah.
So there, there's why anyone would want to get a home occupation and a business license to do that legally. It wouldn't matter that your business, you know, that you worked for selling Tupperware, but you, you're not Tupperware, they're based in Delaware, but you have a license because you store some materials and take those materials and maybe you have a sign on your car and, you know, so this is that type of business.
Yeah.
But I think also Sergeant Ockerman here, when Mr. Baker received the citation from me, we had a discussion about the violations. And I think his, moving his business from Gladstone to Damascus was to gain compliance with our current code. So that way, he was no longer in violation of code, having the business registered in an address outside of the city. But the new application for the permit would allow him to bring that business back into Gladstone. So he's remaining outside the city while he's waiting for this decision process to be completed. And if it's granted in his favor, I think Mr. Baker would probably be, he would be able to move that business back into Gladstone to complete the process.
I spent a fair amount of time reading up on, on this situation. Sergeant Ockerman, it sounds like you've done quite a bit of work to make sure that this came into compliance in, in advance of the application in January and also making sure that the house fit in with the neighborhood, that we weren't starting to, to make this look like a, you know, like a commercial neighborhood or something like that. In your experience working with the Mr. Foster, or Mr. Baker here, have, has that been good? Do we feel like things are, have moved in the right direction and all of the complaints that were outside of compliance at the time when this first came up, you know, back in October of last year, have been made right?
Yeah, so obviously the citation was issued because he was out of compliance at that time. After that, there's subsequent conversations I had with Mr. Baker and multiple follow-ups at the residence that I conducted to make sure that all of the, the, you know, all of the sections were complied with. I had to do a lot of research myself for this because it's not my normal, normal job. But going through all this was very meticulous process and Mr. Baker was, you know, very pleasant working with, you know, getting all of these sections in compliance. And once the appeal was filed, I was able to go through all of those and completed what's Appendix A in your packet there to show how all of those concerns were addressed and then, you know, included additional follow-ups with Mr. Baker to make sure everything was in compliance.
Thank you.
Mr. Orm, did you have any additional questions?
No, no, everything I had to say was in the letter and if you're going to let this go forward, that's up to you, so.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Do we have any other questions, Jennifer?
Do, we had a few more people that wanted to comment.
You did have two people that wanted to. Okay, please have them.
The first is Kari Martinez.
My name is Kari Martinez. I live at 7525 Case on Circle. I have one first question. Have any of you been down that street recently?
Yes.
Have you seen what this looks like?
Today.
Does it look like a residential neighborhood or a corner of a residential street?
Well, it's not, at least I can't speak.
I'm just asking for your personal opinion. I'm not asking.
I wouldn't, I can't comment on that, as long as it's within the, within.
I think it's a shame that you can't because this was a nice residential street. It's a dead-end street. We don't have but what, 12, 13 houses on the street. Over the time that I've lived there, and I have lived there since the street was, became a street. My house was built there and I've lived in it since the beginning. We have had at least three home businesses on that street. None of them have ever looked like what it looks like now. When we come down our street, he doesn't just have a vehicle there. There are, there's a parking on the side with two or three vehicles over there. Then we have the vehicle over here and then vehicles up. He has so many driveways that somebody came down the street one time and wasn't sure what driveway to go into to the house they were going to, which I thought was kind of a shame. And also, I think it would be important to somebody who drives to come out of that cul-de-sac, that dead-end street and turn because down the road is the dogleg where Case on Road comes off of strawberry and doglegs around. And I don't know what the speed limit is there, but I've seen many a time when somebody was exceeding it. And you have to get almost out into the middle of the street in order to see beyond the fact that there's another camper unit there too. So you don't see down the street equally. And it just doesn't look like a residential neighborhood. When you tell people where you live, we have to say, well, we're down the street from the, the tool business. I, I'm not sure this is the direction that Gladstone wants to go. I don't know that we need to, I mean, there is commercial property that's available in Gladstone and I don't see why it has to be on a residential street. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Yvonne Welk.
My name, excuse me, my name is Yvonne Welk, 7490 Case on Circle. I live two doors down. I, the last correspondence I received from the city said that the license had been revoked. And I kind of was wondering why nothing had been taken care of since October. And on Friday, Jan. And on Friday, January sixth, I was returning home about 10 o'clock in the morning. And his other truck was parked on the street besides the one that he has in the driveway all the time. And so I put my car in the garage and I came out to the side of, on my property. And I was snapping a picture to show on my phone that he had both vehicles there at that time, still conducting business out of his property. And he started yelling at me. He noticed that and he started yelling at me, "Come on down, come on, come closer, I dare you." He scared me. And I went in the more, I went upstairs inside, I got quite upset. I left my house about three o'clock to go, come down to Gladstone to take care of a friend's cat. And he saw me coming out of the street and he started to rush out of the vehicle. So I really quick caught the stop sign and got out of there. So I'm just telling you that I've just have thought, been afraid of, of what's going on there. And I'm just amazed that he's been allowed to have all the stuff in his garage and can carry on business from his residence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
I have, I have no additional that have signed up to speak.
Okay. Would you like to come forward, please? Well, we gotta hear all sides.
Okay, well, I am Adam's wife, and I just want to state that he is simply parking his work vehicle at our residence. It is a mobile business. We sort tools in the garage, he gets in the vehicle and he leaves for the day. That's basically it. She quite exaggerated being afraid of my husband or what's going on. She actually yelled at my husband saying, "You need to move. We've been there for eighteen years. Our children are born and raised here, go into Gladstone schools. We have no intention of changing that. We're very happy here. We simply park our work vehicles at our home."
Thank you very much. Any other questions or input from anybody? Any other discussion?
We're gonna close the meeting and then have a discussion amongst ourselves.
Well, this isn't a hearing. This is, yeah.
I have a comment and I'd like to ask Ms. Austin. Our city planner commented about our code. And as I look at, you know, reason we have lawyers is laws aren't always crystal clear. Seventeen point seven eight seems to be a good example of why we need attorneys. I look at the four reasons that you can have a business in Gladstone in your home. Office, professional, personal or business, which this is not. Studio for arts or hand crafts or tutoring, which this is not. It's not a shop for limited customer production or minor service repair. And it's loosely headquarters for a salesperson, but none of the selling is done there. I, I find it, that portion of our code, uh, not to support being able to grant a license for the, for a home business.
I have a question. I'm looking at some of the pictures. And I honestly don't remember what the setback is for the camping trailer from the driveway. And I don't know that that's compliant.
So we do have clear vision standard, so going back to first to Commissioner Pat Smith's comment. The home occupation was issued for the point, uh, headquarters for the crafts or the salesperson. So that was what was found by city staff that was in compliance. We do have clear vision corners required. So if it's parked at an intersection, there is a requirement that you draw a triangle at the curb and come back a certain distance. And that also came to my mind when that comment was made, that we need to make sure that those triangles are being met. I have not looked at that, but that is certainly something that we would.
From a rough glance, it doesn't look like it's compliant.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm happy to work with, with the chief and with Sergeant Ockerman to make sure that that is.
Yeah, um, as, as for, uh, in regards to the clear vision from the driving standpoint, I've driven that road several times recently. And that street, Kason Circle leaving that street has a stop sign and a stop bar, the white painted line in the roadway. And so with that, ORS allows for the vehicles to pull all the way up to that white line, which is put there by the city as a safe place for a vehicle to pull up and stop at. When the vehicle's at that point, there is, there is, there's absolutely clear vision in both directions on Kason road to see any approaching traffic from that point. Nothing of the property, on the property in question obstructs that view at all.
I would still like our city planner to do the, the formula to make sure that it is definitely compliant.
Yes, and just pulling up that section of the code, it's in chapter seventeen point five four. It does, does depend on the width of the right of way. So we'd have to look at the plat map and determine that. But if, if it's an eighty foot right of way, it requires twenty feet legs of the triangle. Sixty feet requires thirty and fifty or less requires forty. So we'd draw that triangle and measure to make sure it's clear.
And that I would prefer that we just be spot on, you know?
Yes, we will follow up on that.
Okay, that'd be great. So I'm assuming that we need to make a vote of whether or not we want to appeal this. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to this? You need to come back up, sir. Thank you.
Adam Baker, again, I just wanted to clear the record for the, I guess, the verbal altercation. So she had mentioned I had my second van at the residence. That is false. It was another franchisee from Boring picking up a sweater. And when he asked me, "What does your neighbor do filming me?", I turned around and saw her filming. And I said, "You should come closer because you're too far away to get the shot." That's what I said. And then she, she scurried off because she would see the name on the side of the van was not mine. It's, that was somebody else. So just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
That's what happened.
Yeah, you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, wha, uh, while you're up, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
You, at some point, there was some discussion about you had an employee that was meeting you there. It sounds like you either don't have that employee now, or if you intended to have an employee, you would have them meet you somewhere else.
Correct. Yes, yes. I no longer have any employees that work for me. The gentleman is no longer, the one employee I had actually lives in Montana now. So he, he moved and there's no, the last few weeks of, while I was still trying to get approval, I was actually picking him up from his residence. I was driving into Oregon City to pick him up to be as compliant as I can. So that, that's what we did until, well.
By any chance, because I was looking through the pictures and I, like I said, I know you have a different place of business. Do you have a picture of, I mean, what do you do at this other location? Do you have vehicles there?
Yeah, I have, uh, my second van is there and it's been there since I was out of compliance by Sergeant Ockerman, who has been fantastic, uh, helping me go through all of this. So since then, I moved that van to that property. So I do, I sort product. I have my vehicle, my second vehicle there and I have a little area inside to sort products. So that's primarily what I use it for. Uh, and then secondary is my home.
Do you actually have a lease at that location?
I pay rent, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you have a picture of that location?
I don't because it's so recent and I've only been, you know, it, it's so, so recent that I don't, I didn't, yeah, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Well, if there isn't any other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to take a vote on this.
I'm just curious, is, is anybody, uh, is there anything that's in this?
Speak up a little bit louder.
In this section, is there anything that jumps out to anybody that is swaying them either one way or another? Just, you, you, you're having a hard time with the allowable?
Well, I didn't do it as a, as owning my own business, but I, uh, worked in, uh, sales for a multinational corporation out of my home for the last seven and a half years of my working career. And my idea of a, of a, uh, sales headquarters would be very different than what Mr. Baker's is.
Okay. All right, nothing.
I, I guess I just wanna review the, the callouts and the appeal. So, um, one is a call out of seventeen dot six dot two, two, oh. And that is like a summary of what, um, home occupation is. It gets much more clarified in seventeen dot seven eight. So I know there, there is a, a comment here about there will be no structural alteration to the dwelling or premises. There was some, I think, discussion back in October about whether the driveway to the left of the property was purpose-built. I would, I would say that a driveway is a driveway. And it was probably in the best interest of the neighborhood to have a place that was kind of further set back to park that trailer. I did drive by earlier today and I thought the placement of the trailer did help keep the view of the neighborhood. So I, I, that's, that's not a hanging point for me as far as the, um, the purpose-built alterations. I also don't think we can say that because someone built a driveway on the left side of their, of their property, that they can never get a home occupation in the future. So that, that was the call it on bullet one. The second one here is the employee reporting to the location. It sounds, sounds like that's been resolved.
Correct.
There was the question about whether this is a principal source of family income. I think based on the staff report, we don't think that that's enforceable. It's not something that we have any visibility to right now, whether or not that is the principal source of income. So I, for me, as far as what we've heard from staff, that's not a concern for me at this point. The aspects being confined to the dwelling. I, I think in the questioning about whether they've been able to clean up the storage thing and the loading and all that. I, I think the work that has been done between October and now has resolved most of that questioning for me. That business is not happening in the driveway, um, creating, I, I guess, what may be considered an eye sore for the neighborhood. It sounds like all of that is very minimal. The storage is kept indoors. Um, I, the, the one that I think is probably kind of greenfield is signs advertising the business exceeding one square foot. We're talking about, uh, uh, the side of the vehicle. And so that's not, that's not like permanent signage. It's not like he's advertising, "Come to this house if you want to get snap-on tools." So, um, I think in other situations where we have people parking work vehicles at home, I, I'm not aware of anything in the code in this seventeen dot seven eight dot O two O. I don't think applies to this, you know, side of a vehicle. And then the last one was about the visible storage of materials. And again, I think that was, um, dealt with between October, when this discussion kicked off and now. So I just wanted to make sure that we talked through all of the things that were in the appeal. So we all felt comfortable, um, making, making a fair decision here. And then there was a question about whether things would stay the way that they are now after that. And so I think after that, that becomes a, a question for code enforcement. So I would encourage anyone, regardless of the decision tonight, to continue to work with code enforcement to make sure that all of the things that were agreed to in the, um, original approval of this, uh, do get maintained.
I agree. Does anybody else have anything that they want to say?
Yes, ready to make a. I don't think it's, uh, it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not.
We're just gonna make.
Before we go to vote, Commissioner Pat Smith, are, are you still feeling hesitancy on seventeen dot seven eight dot O and O as a headquarters for a salesman? Or is that something that, hearing staff's reasoning, you would, you're feeling more confident that may apply?
Well, I think my issue is more with the code than, than specifically than what Mr. Baker's doing. I just, I just don't think it, the way that these four items that identify what a home business can be, clearly say that he's in, in the right position to do that.
I just looked up the address in Damascus and it's a manufactured home. It's not. It's not a, a business park. That's an issue for me. I'm sorry.
Nope, I was just, I.
I.
It should be a business park.
Well, this, the question before us is, there was a license in home occupation approved by the staff and we're deciding about that. So I, I guess to me, it doesn't seem relevant whether it's headquartered out of Damascus or out of the, the home in Gladstone, if that's what they want to do in Gladstone. I think, um, we need to read it on that basis.
I hear what you're saying.
I would agree with that.
So. Does someone want to make a motion?
Um, Commissioner Mercer, did you have anything? Been awfully quiet up there.
No questions at this point.
Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
The numbers, there's no numbers on this.
No, this is not a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm not even sure how to phrase it. How about Mr. Soper? Could he identify how this should be phrased?
Good evening. So is the question, is the question of what motion you would make to either uphold the staff decision or to reverse a staff decision?
Yes.
So you could, you could move to uphold the staff approval? Or you could move to reverse the staff approval of the issuance of this permit?
Well, I think based on our, our code and, and the changes, I, I'm assuming we're, we're leaning towards upholding the approval?
So then we would need someone to make a motion on that.
Okay. I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve, um, staff's approval on the application.
Anyone like the second?
A second.
Okay. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bulbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
No.
Commissioner Mercero.
No.
Chair Smith.
No. Now what do we do?
City attorney, we have a tie vote.
A, a tie vote means that the motion was not approved. The motion was to uphold the staff decision. So at this point, no decision has been made. Is there an alternative motion?
We, we can discuss at this point. Do we want to wait until we have a, a seventh person here to?
I think that would be best, yeah.
Um, I would move that we hold this to the next meeting when we have a full planning commission.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Wees made the motion to hold this over till when we have a full seven, uh, planning commissioners. And it was seconded by Commissioner Langston. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
Hi.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Bulbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. This will be held over to the next meeting. Okay, on to a giant, uh, item agenda, agenda item number four. The public hearing for file DR dash two, three, dash zero, two, update and building addition to Mazda dealership showroom at one, nine, four, zero, five, McLaughlin Boulevard. And let me get my script out here. Okay, this is a public hearing, which I've stated the file number and the name, and it is opened. Are there any abstentions or conflicts of interest by any of our planning commissioners?
No, I have none. No, I have none.
No. Well, I own a Mazda. Does that count?
No, no, I'm good. Commissioner Reese?
No, thank you.
Okay. And there's no, um, has anyone gone by the site to review it?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
I have driven by the site many times.
I just drive by there every day. Yes, multiple times.
Um, Commissioner Mercero, do you have any, any, uh, have you looked at the, at this dealership as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So do we have anyone that's going to testify? We do, okay. Okay.
Do you want to read the script in opening the public hearing?
Do you have the quasi judicial script that talks about who has standing to appeal to Luba? And I'm sorry if you did that already. I was the chief was distracting me.
He is a distractor.
Um, I'm trying to figure out which one it is you're wanting me to read. Public testimony for this hearing will be called four and three groups. Testimony in favor. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
I didn't have it. Number four, uh, Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or in the alternative to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. If you are going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Okay, staff, you want to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. I'm gonna click this on.
I don't see this.
The application before you this evening is a design review request to make an addition to the Mazda of Gladstone site at one nine four oh five McLaughlin Boulevard. The existing building, um, is shown here along McLaughlin with parking on the north side and then an access aisle and, um, one directional parking on the south side. Um, you can see the little, well, that, that is the building expansion. It'll be on the front of the building on the McLaughlin frontage. In front of the expansion will be, um, landscaping and sod instead of concrete. That's their, um, asphalt that's there now. The expansion is seven hundred and forty-six square feet and two stories in size. It's a, um, jewel box type um, construction to display the vehicles. The other site improvements that are being proposed are updates to the parking, landscaping and the building facade um, outside of this building expansion area. There was a requirement for quite a bit of landscaping addition because the site is pretty limited and what I think there was zero landscaping actually on the site. So that's pretty limited. Um, and they were required by the code to add more landscaping. So, um, all along the frontage of McLaughlin as well as, um, in the areas of the parking that are being upgraded, there will be additional landscaping added. Um, just some facts about this site. It's in the C three general commercial zoning district, two point three, three acres in size. It is outside of our environmental overlays, the floodplain and the habitat conservation area district. It is, um, a public notice was sent to the applicant, the owner and everyone who owns property within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject site. And we also sent our agency notice and in your packet, you received public works comments and O dot comments that were received back as a result of that agency notice. We did not receive any public notice as a result of the, the public. We didn't receive any public testimony as a result of the public notice that was mailed. So again, C three zoning, um, you can see here the site is adjacent to, um, some light industrial to the north. Um, the multifamily residential across River Road, um, to the west. And then adjacent to McLaughlin Boulevard, which the rest is the C three general commercial zoning. This use, which is existing, is permitted outright in the zone. So this expansion of the use is a permitted outright expansion requires design review. Let's see. For some reason it stopped working. There we go. Um, so this is the, um, east and west existing elevations and um, if you click one more ti- oh, I can do it now. Um, so just to show what the expansion will look like. So from existing, we do get a, um, a little bit of a height increase, but we are still below the maximum thirty-five foot height limitation. It's at twenty-six now with the proposed, um, addition. There's more glazing, more windows along the frontage. And then, um, along the west elevation, um, you've got some design details, um, that are being changed as well. I think some of the doors and things are being changed out. Um, and then here is your south and north elevations. Um, and once the existing, this is the existing today, how it looks, um, and with the expansion, you do see that bump of height on each end because it, it's visible from those sides, um, as well as that addition on the north elevation of the Mazda, um, logo and that, um, por- portion of the building. So with that, um, this was a pretty straightforward design review application. Um, we did find that we need to, uh, just verify with a photometric plan that the parking area provides, um, safe passage for pedestrians to the vehicles as well as to the public right of way. So we, um, request that the applicant be conditioned to provide that, um, prior to their building permit issuance. Um, and then the O dot and public works comments both, um, requested a condition that O dot is to submit documentation of a one foot of right of way behind the sidewalk. Um, and to obtain an O dot miscellaneous permit for the landscaping work that'll be in the McLaughlin right of way. And then as far as the sanitary sewer, um, from public works, there was a video that was submitted. Um, but it didn't, um, complete the stretch of sanitary sewer that public works needed to be able to determine that it was um, fully up to current standards. So the public works department would like to see that additional video line videoed and then, um, any improvements that are required based on what's found by that video would need to be done prior to a final certificate of occupancy. That is the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions commissioners might have.
How are we on setbacks?
We are, uh, there are no setbacks in the C three because we are not adjacent to any residential zoning.
Commissioners, any more questions?
No, not of staff, thank you.
Okay, how about public testimony?
Are we starting with the applicant first?
Okay, thank you. Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening.
Beautiful. Good evening.
I'm, uh, David Elder. I'm, uh, here representing, uh, the ownership of the Matthews Automotive Group. I'm the Director of Operations for the Matthews Automotive Group in Oregon, which is comprised of Mazda of Gladstone at one nine four five McLaughlin and Toyota Gladstone, which is adjacent to it at one nine three, seven, five. We're expanding the dealership just so you guys know, uh, because we have to come into compliance with Mazda's facility requirements. It's called retail evolution. So we're, I can have a jewel box that's you can see a car lifts up. It should be a really like, uh, I, I think a good looking project and, you know, add to the, add to the curb appeal, the dealership. Also, it's going to expand the customer area and the area for the salespeople, uh, as the, as the dealership continues to grow. Just to kind of give you a little insight into our business and, uh, in the Matthews Automotive Group, we have thirty-six, uh, full-time employees at Mazda. We have a hundred and ninety-six employees at our Toyota stores. We have a total of two hundred and thirty-two employees. And sometimes it doesn't look like it driving by, but, uh, in twenty twenty-two, we sold five thousand eight hundred and nine cars uh, out of the dealership, new and used. So we're really just looking to add to the beauty, expand the showroom, make it more useful and accommodating for our customers and for our employees. And, uh, I'd like to turn it over to Darren Matthews, our general manager, uh, to add some additional insights.
Good evening, Commissioner. How are you guys doing?
Very well. Thank you.
All right, uh, so what, like David said, I'm Darren Matthews. I'm the General Manager at Toyota of Gladstone. Um, so we both work together between both dealerships, uh, based off the, some of the numbers that, uh, David presented. Um, with Mazda, we're currently the number one Mazda store in the state of Oregon. Uh, with Toyota, we're the number one, uh, Toyota dealership in the entire Northwest. Uh, so we're doing very well there, uh, on the service side as far as vehicles serviced. Uh, last year, we serviced right around sixty thousand eight hundred cars, which put us right around two hundred vehicles a day that we serviced in our service departments between Toyota and Mazda. Uh, just a little background on Matthews Automotive, uh, we're Automotive Group been in business for right around thirty-three years. Uh, family owned, uh, in multiple different states. Uh, we've been in Oregon, uh, for the last two years. But we're very present, very hands-on ownership, uh, and we look forward to being, uh, good stewards to the community as well. So we're very involved. And we look forward to keep, uh, pushing that forward as well. But, uh, really tonight, we wanted to be able to introduce ourselves to you guys. So you can meet us as well, um, and just kind of understand, you know, a little bit about us, our background. Uh, and, uh, you know, how much we like to contribute to the Gladstone community moving forward.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Tim Brenner, um, architect with Access Design Group. Um, my address is one, 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 zero, four Southeast Stark Street in Portland, Oregon, uh, nine, seven, two, one, six. And, uh, they did such a great job. I have nothing to add. Um, I, you know, I, one thing that wasn't, um, on the presentation that we added were a couple of views. I, I thought it was really uh, important to show, you know, how the streetscape's going to really improve, uh, on McLaughlin Boulevard and really, really jazz it up. And it's going to make it a much better environment for customers, uh, and employees as well. And, you know, just to, just to tag on with Matthews Auto Group and what they're doing here, it's, it's pretty impressive how a company comes uh, and becomes local so fast. And I applaud them for that. I work with hundreds of auto dealerships all over the Northwest and, uh, this is a we're, we're proud to have them in Gladstone. So it's pretty exciting, I think. Um, I did want to make a comment on, on there were three conditions that I just wanted to hit on. Um, so uh, the photometric plan, pretty standard to provide that at permit, which of course we'll do, um, O dot right away, they always ask for something. So here we are. Um, and then on the sanitary sewer, I just want, we really try to be proactive to do that ahead of time. And they ran out a length of cord on their camera. And so there, there, we're coordinating to get them to come back and, and finish that. And then whatever outcome from, uh, public works is obviously what we'll do during the permit review. So I just wanted to hit on, on those things and, uh, we concur with staff's, uh, decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was a very thorough packet.
Oh, great.
I do have a question.
Yeah, you bet.
Aside from normal ingress egress during the project, do you foresee any, uh, issues with, uh, I guess it would be River Road? Uh, or McLaughlin Boulevard for, uh, any stoppage of traffic, any kind of traffic interruption for the construction?
Oh, during construction? Um, well, we are not allowed, you know, to be out on O dot. Uh, right away, of course, during construction. So it'll be staging, it'll be on site.
Sure.
We're gonna have to move some things around, um, to, in order to accommodate that. This is not a large addition.
No.
And it's not a large project, but it, it's pretty interesting for seven hundred and forty-two square feet. It gives a huge impact in the visual appearance, uh, which is kind of cool. Um, so we're really not anticipating, um, any issues with that. You know, we did work with O dot and our traffic engineer to show that we had adequate site clearances and and all met all those requirements, which you can see in your report that we did. So, um, sure, there'll be a little bit more traffic with delivery of product and stuff, but we will create circulation through the site so they can enter on that north side and then enter out onto River Road.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions?
Uh, similar to, to your last question, um, it looks like the, the new buildout is getting really close to the sidewalk. Is there going to be any sort of like deterring of pedestrians when, when the construction's getting close? Or will there, how, how are we splitting? Uh, is there going to be like scaffolding or I just, my, my question is, uh, basically safety of pedestrians.
Oh, of course. Um, could you go to the site plan? I think I can explain that, um, off of the site plan. So, um, I wish I, I didn't bring my pointer and I should have. So you can see on there that rectangle in the front, which is the building expansion. Uh, the, the line at that dotted line that's kind of at an angle is the property line. And then about another five feet beyond that is the back of the sidewalk. So there's a fair amount of room in front of, even with the addition to work. Um, we're actually not allowed to go beyond that into the, into the sidewalk, um, without appropriate permits for closure and rerouting of pedestrians. Um, I, I don't believe in this case, uh, we're going to affect that at all. Um, because there, gosh, there's about at the, at the tight end there, there's still probably about twelve or thirteen feet of room there, which is plenty.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, um, do we have any testimony that's against this proposal?
I have not received any.
I received any, okay. Is there any neutral testimony?
I have not.
Okay, um, staff recap and recommendation, please.
Yes, just, oh, I'm stuck again. Thank you, Tammy. Um, staff continues to recommend that the planning commission approve this design review application based on the findings in the staff report. Um, with the three special conditions identified on the screen.
Okay. All right, um, I would entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close our public hearing.
And I second.
Commissioner, uh, Langston made the motion to close the public hearing and it was seconded by Commissioner Pat Smith. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Okay, any discussion, commissioners?
Uh, one, one item was, um, I suspect signage is approved separately. This is sign, cause signage is okay.
Separate sign permit will be required.
That is my only question. My only comment.
Commissioner Weiss, any questions?
No questions.
No discussion?
No, ma'am.
Well, I'd entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I move that we approve application DR dash two, three, dash zero, two as presented.
You might wonder if put in the special, those three special.
With the three special conditions.
Yes, there we go.
I'll second.
Um, Commissioner Pat Smith made the motion to accept and Commissioner Langston seconded it. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
Hi.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. It has been approved. Thank you very much. Is there any business from the public?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, business from the planning commission. I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Smith.
I have none tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business?
I have none either.
Thank you.
Let me be on Zoom tonight.
Commissioner Volb- Volbada.
None, nothing new for me.
Commissioner Weiss.
Um, I just had, had a question. Tonight we had folks that showed up live who we did take um, audience participation from. I was glad to see that. I did notice in the agenda, we still have verbiage to get, um, notice in by noon on the day of. Uh, so I don't know if we want to change the verbiage in the agenda. I, I encourage having folks that are live, uh, be able to speak, you know, up to the, the moment when it makes sense or during the meeting. So
That is something that will be changing, yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, uh, I don't have any new business, but I really appreciate every one of my, uh, fellow counselors, uh, or, yeah, commissioners, sorry. Planning commissioners, uh, I think, uh, yeah, I just appreciate everybody's opinion and efforts and being here and Planning commissioners, uh, I think, uh, yeah, I just appreciate everybody's opinion and efforts and being here and staff support. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. Vannick was wonderful to lay this on my desk. I'm sure all of you have received a statement of economic interest guide. Um, there are trainings, um, you sent this out to everyone, didn't you?
Correct, yes.
There are trainings available if you have any issues with doing your SEI filing. But we need to make sure we get them done before, what is it, April fifteenth?
April fifteenth, correct.
Um, I don't have anything other than that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll motion to close the meeting.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Weiss made a motion to clo- uh, to, uh, adjourn and Commissioner Smith seconded. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned.